Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin this morning, I'd just like to take personal privilege on this last day of the last month of 2014 to just give all a thank you and an acclamation to our sitting Judge, Judge Ware. And as we come to the close of the hearing, I would say that more will be said on the 12th throughout this month, but I just personally would love to say thank you for all of his service, not only for this country, but also for this county and all that you've done for this county. We would not be where we are today, the地域and the condition that we are if it hadn't been for Judge Ware's leadership and all the years that he's given to this county, certainly selfless in many ways. So I just wanted to just say personally, thank you for, on behalf of this court, thank you for your service and we hope and wish for you the best as you enter retirement and all the things that are due to you. So again, thank you and Godspeed. With that, on this eighth day of December of 2014, I'd like to open the Potter County Court up and I want to ask Commissioner Church if he would open up again to this meeting with a word of prayer.
And ride this horse to his death. Morning, everyone. Would you please join me in prayer? Almighty God, we thank you for today. It's a beautiful day, sun shining. We do ask that you give us moisture, moisture that is greatly needed by all those who tend the land or livestock and crops and the importance of those agricultural products to our area. We thank you for all of the Potter County employees that do such a great job to serve our citizens. We remember just yesterday, 73 years ago, the bombing at Puddle Harbor and remember that freedom is not free. So we thank you for the men and women who volunteered to go in our stead to fight to keep us free. We ask today that you look at, look over us here on the court, give us patience, wisdom, make the decisions that are pleasing in your eyes. We ask all these things in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
First item on the agenda will be the approval of a minutes from the November 24th. Okay, it's been a motion to approve the secondment. All those in favor, show hands. Pass is five zero. Item two is vouchers. It is to consider and act upon the approval of payments of vouchers processed by the county office's office for the period of November 9th, 2014 through December 2nd, 2014. Tolling for checks, 15938 through 159549 and wire number 472 through 473 in the amount I move that we approve the vouchers. Pass, Commissioner. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers as presented. Any questions pertaining to the vouchers or selections? Okay. All those in favor, show hands. Pass is five zero. Item three is the insurance report. Just to recognize the insurance report, Dave, you have anything in respect to that you'd like to present us with?
No, sir.
Thank you. Insurance report so recognized. Item four, so Potter County Projects, is to hear a report on project, Potter County Projects and to take any action necessary. Mr. Ed.
Good morning. The report I presented to you, does anyone have any questions at this time? I do have three changes I'll make you aware since I filled out this form. On the second page, the Santa Fe Fire escapes we completed that this past Saturday afternoon. Bottom of the second page, the fire station six remodel, we have our pre-bid meeting this coming Friday for the environmental. And on the third page, fire station three project, we did not hold our meeting last week as thought, so we would be hoping that that Commissioner's Court is happy.
Mike, I do have a quick question. The gentleman that you had at court last session that was reviewing some of the energy efficiency items, any update on that?
We held our meeting with them, a new engineer with Green Star out of Houston, Texas. We did our preliminary detailed investigation. We are waiting on report to come back from them right now, then hopefully we'll have that this week or next week. What that will entail is when it presented to the Commission's Court, these are things that you can do in order to spend money to save.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, let's take it to the meeting for after court session today, that would be in the Commission's Court, right? Yes. All right. Item five, district courts building project, which is to act upon allowing the expenditure of $11,675 for the renovation of office space for the seventh court of appeals. An entire amount to be reimbursed by the state through the seventh court of appeals. Mike?
What we have here presented to you today, Judge Quinn, and they would be here, and I believe he has presented, y'all will be better than they presented within the packet. Over within the district courts building, I've given each one of you a schematic drawing this morning to show the area that we're speaking of, the area. Basically, we're removing some filing cabinets, we're looking to enclose an area with glass walls. And the next two following pages will basically give you the specifications on what it will look like. The first one is the yeast elevation, where we're closing in an area, putting a glass storefront. And then the second page will show the area on the south where we're closing in a little wall here. The maintenance department will perform some of this work. We'll be reworking the ceiling. The cost that I believe David also presented to you, $11,675, is the worst case scenario in this project. So we're seeking your permission.
David, will this go up for a bid for vendors, or what is that process?
No, we have two of the three contractors already are under contract with us. That would be the HVAC and the electrical. We already have contractors that we bid out. The third portion is the glass wall and it gets under the bid amount. It's around $2,000 or $47,750. So that's good.
Just my next question, Carrie, in terms of the entire amount to be reimbursed by the state through the seventh court of appeals, I guess I'm surprised that there are funds that can be used for repair in terms of the actual property or the office space.
I assume that he got it approved from the state, obviously he did, so they do reimburse this for location.
Okay.
Normally the funds that they have during their budget, they allow them to do for a couple of years.
Okay.
Item four, Jay. Second. Jay, it's been a motion to approve the secondment to do the expenditures of $11,750 for the renovation of office space for the seventh court of appeals. All those in favor? Okay, pass is five zero. Item number six is the equipment purchase, is to consider and act upon purchasing a Rosenbauer fire truck on the Daco Fire Equipment in the amount of $375,000 utilizing the HDAC Corporateed Purchase Program, contract number FS12-13, and the funds budgeted in the 2014, 2015 fiscal year. Next. If any want to add any questions, I think well, I mean.
The only thing I can add to it is this is the demo truck. This is one that normally is a lot more expensive than this, so we're kind of getting this one at a discounted price this time around.
And which vehicle is this one replacing?
The one it is replacing has already gone to auction. It's a 1992 E1 Hush that has broken down on us.
Okay.
We've already transferred that to auction.
And as you know, we did.
Yes, please. Judge Ware has a main question.
Okay. Judge Ware has approved of the motion. I'll second it, that we purchase the Rosenbauer fire truck, Daco Fire Equipment in the amount of $175,000. Those all in favor, show hands. You have a question?
No, I was just listening to the dollar amount. I'm not sure if you referenced the one above it. Did you say $375,000?
Yes.
Okay, I heard that incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And pass is five zero. Item number seven is equipment purchase, is considered and act upon a coal planer from Yellow House Machinery, an amount of $19,800 utilizing buyboard contract number 435-10, funds budgeted into 2014, 2015 fiscal budget year.
Sabby, is there anything left to add?
No. Then motion to approve. Second. Second, Commissioner Church, to purchase an amount of $19,800 utilizing the buyboard contract for the coal planer from Yellow House Machinery. All those in favor, show hands. Pass is up to five zero. Item number eight is the parking garage contract, the Amarillo Local Government Corporation to consider and act upon the final approval of the agreement with the ALGC to participate in the parking garage project.
So what you have in your packet is a copy of the agreement as it stands today, and we did review this in detail at our previous court, November 10. And we allowed for public comment. We received two comments from public citizens and certainly would open the floor for additional comment, but just at a high level to get everyone acclimated again in terms of what's in the agreement. The contract specifies for 150 spaces, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The land owner is the city of Amarillo and the landlord is the ALGC, the Amarillo Local Government Corporation, and then Potter County, and the parties involved, Potter County and obviously the taxpayers. The term that's in this agreement is 25 years and the day of when that actually starts is when the facility becomes available for public use. That's when day one would start. The agreement can be terminated by mutual agreement after 15 years and then in year 20, parties will come together. That being the LGC, city of Amarillo, Potter County to determine if an additional 25 years would be needed at that time. The cost that's presented is $1,089,124.05. Fifty percent of that will be paid when the project starts. Twenty-five percent will be paid when the project is halfway done and then 25% paid when the project is completed, substantially completed by the project architect. And again, in terms of how this conversation started was the Potter County parking need in terms of where we were. So we had recently underwent some strategic planning to assess our parking situation and we knew we had a need for parking spots at that time. What makes this property pretty unique to the conversation is where it will sit, adjacent to some of our property and across the street from Sheriff Admin as it sits today. So when the discussion of the parking garage came to the forefront, Potter County participating in that, we saw as an opportunity to help save dollars for our taxpayers who are one in the same in the city of Amarillo and in Potter County. So again, the agreement stands in front of you. We do have in the audience our city manager, Jared Atkinson, who can certainly address the court, and if I misstated anything on this agreement, please feel free to correct me as well.
Chair, view everything. Thank you. Commissioner explained it very well on behalf of two hats today, the city of Amarillo, the Amarillo Local Government Corporation. I want to thank the county for coming together and working with us on this unique opportunity for both of us, and so spots available to you when you most need them, leaves them available for the management of the project, what's needed there, so we stand very well.
Certainly fulfills a great need we've had for many years, so certainly again, it's a good cooperative partnership. Any questions, Court, that the President?
Question, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Gia for taking the lead on this project in getting us really involved and I want to thank you for that.
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement between Amarillo Local Government Corporation and Potter County for the parking garage contract.
It's been moved and seconded to approve of the interlocal agreement corporation with to participate in the parking garage project. All those.
Commissioner, just before we take the vote, should we open the floor for any other public comment prior to, if there is any?
Forgive me also, I wanted to pass it off to you too, to see if you had any comments.
No, I think, I think, if my memory is correct, I think the city attorney's office drafted the contract we kind of made. I mean, we kind of exchanged drafts and changes and so is the agreement you had before was one satisfactory, but our office and the city attorney, the source of it, we don't have a dream. So we're just satisfied with the stated agreement.
Okay. With that said, and also with the commission, we do have possibly a few in the audience that may want to have something to say or speak on that, and if so, this is your opportunity to do so. If you do, if you come up and give your name, and I will allow you two minutes to speak on that. Seeing none, hearing none, we're pretty much satisfied that we follow with that, so we lay back to perform our motion and second it. All those in favor, show hands. Pass is five zero. Item number nine is a Potter County Immortal Stadium leased to Southern Independent League and is to recognize the renewal of the lease for an additional three years' term and/or to take any action necessary in regard to the lease. Ready?
The lease, the lease provides the renewal, but it's automatic option of the Southern League, LSE, and they have exercised that option, so of course the language does say subject to compliance with the lease. So as per, since we hadn't done it before, we sought out some information about provision, consideration of provisional lease, which requires that in addition to a rental payment, improvements being made, the lease property itself. So LSE's been very forthcoming in providing that and I supplied you guys with a copy of the latest information that we've received from them. And I, at one point, we approved this, I think at the last Commissioner's Court met and felt like there were some shortfalls and we realized or after the meeting that we had only gotten information the past couple of years rather than the full term of the lease. So we got updated information and we had asked some questions about whether certain items would be more properly classified as improvements as opposed to maintenance. So we, the second set of figures that we got, sorted that out and so we haven't really discussed that in any kind of detail, but kind of following along with sort of a, I guess you'd say, a criteria that we here at the county set. We've got numbers, revised numbers. I mean, bottom line shows that if you look at the latest, excuse me, the latest group of numbers that we've been provided, and you look at it the way we looked at it in our committee meeting, we got that they had made the amount of requirements, improvements over that period of time that this required and then some, by my calculation.
So we're pretty good steer as far as the meeting?
That's, that's, that's what it appears like.
Okay.
So Commissioner Vaughn, the documentation that Dave was speaking to was sent via email, so if you do not have that in your packet, if you're looking for that.
I'm sure I have.
I just, I saw you looking for it, so I wanted to make that clear. And Commissioner Kelly and I had the discussion that Dave was speaking to, there were questions on the contract and the renewal. So again, as it is stated, an automatic renewal, I think for two terms of three-year increments, if I remember correctly, Dave.
Yes.
The way the language in the contract reads today, it's an annual rent of $24,000 and improvements of 24 and a fund, which was not established during the contract start date. So in a sense, in essence, that came out to $48,000 in terms of improvements. So every year in the contract, we were expecting the yearly payment of $24,000 and then $48,000 in improvements.
My question is, have we received the additional $24,000 that we were supposed to receive at the end of each year?
The?
For, that we would hold for improvements?
No, not, well, that's, I would say yes, and the reason I would say yes is remember that requires, that has the option like the contemplated, you're talking about element three, which says put away $24,000 for improvements, but no, the language also has provision allows work to be done in place of that, so they might put up actually money as long as they make the value of the improvements.
About in time.
Yeah, the way one lease is written, so.
How do we, how do we identify those improvements?
Well, what we've done is just look at the amount, total amount of improvements. If you follow, the formula is if you, $48,000 in improvements for that fund set aside for a year, and so we're figuring, term of the lease, that's $192,000.
I was looking, you know, I was looking at the information that gave for maintenance and upgrades.
Right.
And most of that money was for maintenance, was not for any upgrades. I'd beg to see, find out where the 200, whatever some thousand dollars of improvements are. The only, one of the improvements that I saw was the, what do you want to call it, when they, actually we ended up paying for the, I can't think of the term.
The box.
The box, yeah. The press box. That was definitely an improvement, but the county paid for that, they didn't figure that out. Has that money been made up?
Well, I don't think they have to. I mean, we paid, we paid that on our own, we've done work in addition to what's required, so, you know, which is a reasonable, we go into that, but county has done some work, yeah, on that lease ourselves, and I don't, you know, that doesn't, we have to figure that into their.
Well, that would, to me, would be part of the 24,000 at the end of the year that should have been reimbursed, or should have been given to the county, part of the contract. And I'm not real happy about this situation that we've got, because I cannot see that where we had 200,000 dollars of improvements up there at that ballpark. That's supposed to be paid by Southern Independent.
Over the three-year period?
Over the four-year, and I think it's 192 is the dollar amount. And what we did in terms of preparatory, prior to this coming to court, Commissioner Kelly had his concerns and certainly echoed at the time. We met with Carrie and Dave to go through a document that Stephanie Tucker, who's in the audience today, provided to the court. That's what you have before you in terms of your documentation. We went line by line of what we would categorize an improvement versus just normal maintenance. And any in question, we certainly leaned on their behalf. So we went through, vetted out those dollar amounts, and we ended up with $105,000, which left $87,000 to fulfill the contract. Through that process, Dave reached out to Stephanie and said, we're showing $87,000 of improvements pending. She provided an additional document that showed the additional amount and actually a little above that, showing that they fulfilled it at $196,000 when the requirement was $192. So again, I think it goes back to, the gray area has been, is an improvement versus just normal maintenance, repair and wear on the property. But what we did go through prior to being brought to the full court was vetting out each line item of where that fell. And Stephanie did, in all fairness, provide additional documentation to the court to show those improvements.
I would like to mention, I had a concern, because we do just have a spreadsheet, but we have not seen an actual block.
Correct.
Terrifying the expenses.
And that's absolutely correct.
So over the four-year term, have we as a county ever requested?
We have, last year. We requested that.
Who did request?
The court did of Mark Lee and?
Did we get it?
We did. We did.
Who is responsible for saying that this contract is, is followed?
Well, called out, legally speaking, I would say since the Commission's Court asked for the county to be the Commission's Court.
So one time in four years, we asked for it. I would say we have a problem here too.
And I'm not playing that out, I'm not trying to play the devil's advocate necessarily here, but the document, I've got a copy of it too, August, shows some things, some questions about whether the amount's been paid, to my knowledge, there was no follow-up on that to say, hey, what are you doing to make the situation better? So the report received with no actions taken, assuming you considered this to be.
Well, it makes it really difficult for a LSE, if we're not talking to them regularly and saying, well, you need to be, and then at the last minute, we say, well, look at here, you're way behind. We're nice people, that's, that's a problem. We've been very nice to Southern Independent League and we have been remiss in some of our actions that we should have taken, no question about that.
Okay. Every, laid down on the soul we're here this morning, we can just, probably in all ways, to a degree of deal is concerned, it's outstanding.
Yeah, my concern is I'd like to see with the documentation, where all the repairs have been, all this, all this stuff has been done to the ballpark out there. Just give me some documentation.
So we will address that through, Dave, I believe.
Now, the point of reference would be asking that too, would that be Mr. Lee or the Mr. Mrs. Tucker?
That's her.
Okay. So, Ms. Tucker, would you have any comments on that, or what we would pass forward thoughts to documentation?
Morning, everyone. I do want to address the court. There is some confusion with everyone. I do want to ask that there was, I did look back in some emails from the past from communications with Commissioner. They accepted what was done last year in the spreadsheet that I found for the $35,000. The previous was $31,000, and I'm giving this to y'all. No, it was not proven saying, hey, y'all were negligent last year. So it was never said, hey, y'all were not negligent last year, you were negligent the year before. So we were never known in the years past that we did not make, you know, we weren't that done. So that being known, we truly believe that we made the improvements to be known. We think that as a leaser, I was a farm-grown lady. So I would say, when you make the improvements to the land that you agreed to take care of, those improvements are made to your property. You leave those properties as an improvement. So we are making these improvements. We have told y'all that we are making these improvements cash investments to make y'all's property the best it can be. We have shown y'all's pictures of different things that we have promised. We have got to improve. We've got to improve the restrooms, the public restrooms. We have got to improve the playing fields, and we have got to improve the locker rooms. If we want to compete at a higher scale, to bring public awareness to, and the pride back to baseball, where the guys feel like they're doing, we have to make that prideful. So we have, myself and Southern Independent League have promised that we are going to spend money and time and effort. And myself have promised the court that we're going to make these efforts. We really do not feel that we have felt short of this with the prior management or the prior thing. I do don't think that there's been any negligent made, and I don't think there's been any communication with actually the person that has signed the lease. I mean, maybe the general manager had known of this, but the person that is actually responsible of the lease had no prior knowledge of this until August, actually. So we feel like we have tried to fulfill our part of the bargain, and we will try our best in the future to do it more and more in the forecourt.
So Stephanie, in regard to Commissioner Kelly's question for the improvements that you do have leased here, so certainly a level of appreciation for taking another look at it and presenting the dollar amounts. Are there receipts or documentation? I know that that's a concern our county auditor brought to the forefront as well. Is there documentation that you could provide for each one of these line items?
There are some, but in an email that was sent to you personally on July 3rd, 2013, it said an estimate would be fine. So if we need to get an appraiser, a third-party appraiser to go out there, we actually came back and tried to do the least amount that we could. I mean, this is the deal. I'm here to play baseball. I am trying to provide a community service, and that's what I'm here for. I'm not here to play politics. I am here to provide a community service.
Sure, and I can work directly with you on the email referenced, July 3rd, so that we can make sure that wasn't taken out of context. I definitely want to address that email directly. I would be willing to work with Stephanie and maybe Carrie directly to get to the receipts that you can provide, and the ones that you can't, and maybe bring those forth to the court.
Why don't we do that?
And certainly involve you as well, Dave, so that we have all the documentation lined up and ready to be presented to the court.
Can I also ask, how much longer is this take? Again, we are wanting to play baseball, we need to know if y'all are wanting us to play baseball. Is there someone else that is wanting to take this lease? Is somebody out there, if there is one that wants to take this lease, I would like it to be named in the minutes, if somebody's wanting to take this lease from the SIL or not. We want to play baseball, we're committed.
In terms of your first question, I can commit to working with you over the next week to get our documentation in line, so it is prepared to be presented to the court in the next session. So I can commit time to that, to get to the first question of how long is this going to take? I can commit some absolute time for that.
Just before you go, what is your window times for it?
It's past due, sir. In all due respect, we have printed thousands and thousands of dollars, and so has the other league. We have committed, there's a $200,000 bond that we have committed, and we are going to play baseball at Thunderheads in the American Association, whether it's at our county state game, and that's where we're playing, they don't play. But with all due respect, we are committed to spend money, and we really want to make this happen.
Legally, we already agree yet. Isn't that right, Dave?
I think, my opinion, you have...
I don't think, I don't think we can win that in court.
And another issue, another factor as far as the time to consider is that let's assume that in a worst-case scenario, we say there's an efficiency, Commission's Court need to take that action in court, and then there's a 30-day period for improvements.
They have a chance to...
You're going to be rushing this down two months down, or a month and a half.
We can afford that.
And in all fairness, I don't feel like, well, that's not my perspective of my questioning on the court, is that we're not wanting to do business. That is not the conversation as it has been today. It is just more get the improvements in line, and I think...
It's all a passion. You've taken on the Independent League responsibilities, and, you know, my feeling is that those things are still, still haven't been done, it still hasn't been met, and since you took it over, you're still responsible.
But can I ask, in all fairness, why this wasn't addressed to the previous management the last four years? And that's all fairness. I just want to know if there was somebody of my, if there wasn't a management, or it wasn't a lease change, if that is, in all fairness, why is it just at this point in time we're having this discussion?
I think that's a fair question.
I would just answer that question, say, "We have asked that question of the previous management, and that is the spreadsheet that I think everyone has kind of held up here, and I'll be happy to provide that to you as well."
But the spreadsheet does say, in all fairness, that we are over-pumping of what we're doing. The only question is, is that third piece that, as when we first met, you yourself didn't even know about. And so no one was evident of that third piece. And so why is it only evident when the new management took over? And so we're just trying to, again, try to play baseball, try to do what's right for the community, and play baseball on our own, I would say.
I will commit to working with her directly, getting, I would be willing.
And continuing to move the ball down the road till it be, won't compromise them starting at that time?
Are we ready to recognize if they got the lease?
Mr. Lee, standing up, is there any comments you want to address?
I said something on their behalf?
Yes.
If you can.
How are you all doing today?
Good.
You know, I've done this job for a long time, you know, with baseball, and I can tell you, I know exactly what Stephanie is saying. This time of year is a crucial time of year. I would suggest, you know, knowing what I know about running baseball in Emerald, if you can get this worked out, you need to renew this lease with them. This is the right person for the job. She's got so much energy, and I think she's good for baseball in Emerald. Just seeing what's going on so far, I think that, you know, this town's going to be looking at some good stuff. And I know she'll take care of your stadium. You know, the lease is complicated. I think that last lease was really complicated. I never could understand why some of those things were put in there and stuff. But I think that you can work that out. But I'm speaking from an ex-GM, it's tough not knowing where you stand. There's a lot at stake here, you know? Right now, there's a lot of things going on that the baseball team needs to be doing, but be confident that they can do these things without doing... So for me personally, I would suggest that you go ahead and renew the lease to them, and then work out some other things, because I know they can get them worked out. But this is the right person for the job, so I think you need to go ahead and...
And what I mean, the contracts were already there, as far as...
Yeah, and you know, I think, I don't know why, it's had dawned on me before now, if there's nothing to... I mean, if there are questions about improvements, I would think y'all could be worked, those could be worked out without a lease continuing. So in other words, I think there's a path for both, and I don't know why I haven't seen it with this clarity until I write down some comments that...
Well, I just wanted to say...
You guys have...
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with kind of, okay, let's sit down and see if there's anything we need to tweak here. And, you know, like, one question that occurs to me is that the lease goes on and on, and every year you put money in for improvements. Well, maybe at some point, you don't need to make any more improvements, and so what do you do? I mean, you know what I'm saying? So maybe, maybe look at what's there already, and still going forward with lease or both things, things could be done, and both sides of this, this can be satisfied.
I think that makes sense, so I'm going to suggest, and is there anything else you want to, Commissioner, that you had?
No, if Commissioner Lee is going to go ahead and satisfy that particular, then it'd be fine.
Okay, we can continue to work the dotted eyes and cross the t's as we move forward. Let's go ahead and entertain a motion to recognize and renew the lease for additional a three-year term, and move on. Okay, so recognize.
Well, we need a motion to...
I think you can just recognize the lease for a record without having to move on.
Any comments that we've had before, you guys can continue to work, work those out. All right, thank you, Stephanie Moore. So recognize. Item number 10, official bonds, term beginning January 1, 2015. Is to recognize and take any act necessary regarding the official bonds for elected officials getting turned for office of office on January 1, 2015.
I think we have two additional bonds now that we Julie...
We have.
We have the Treasurers' Bond.
That was already been approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
So she just has the form that, I mean, I guess, for you guys. And then we have the County Court, too, rock panel services, rock master bond, and that bond is an amount that does need, that does need to be approved by the Treasurers' Court to sign.
Yes.
It does.
Okay. And then I also have the JP3, I have Gary Jackson's bond.
Okay.
And I have the County Judge, Meezy Tanner's bond, that's already been set, but it hasn't been approved, right? And then I have the District Clerk and the County Clerk's bond.
Okay, so all of those bonds, so noted, and now we entertain a motion to approve and recognize, of the term January 1, 2015.
I move to approve bonds for the District and County Clerks. County Judge, JP3, help me out now.
County Court Law Two.
County Court of Law Two.
Yes.
How about yours?
Didn't you say County Clerk?
Okay, I heard that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approval of the bonds, so noted. Those in favor, show hands. A pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 11, West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association, and is to recognize candidacy of Commissioner Church, or Board of Directors, of West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association. Very happy.
Just might say, I was asked if I would let my name be put up, and I think it'd be an honor, and also I think it'd be great to part with.
Is there a representation?
I said yes.
What position?
Just a second. Director.
So recognized, and certainly it would be an honor, and move forward to the county, so congratulations. Item number 12, Union Pacific Memorandum of Understanding, is to consider an act upon amendment to the Amendment of Understanding with the Union Pacific to construct a turning lane on the North Side Drive at U.P.'s expense. And B, to authorize the installation of signage on or before February 2015 in connection with the improvements at U.P.'s expense.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to say thank you, Delaware, also. I used him as a reference when I applied out here. Little bit, and all 21 years later, I still be here. But thank you for everything you have done for me. But on this, I just wanted to add one thing. They're going to put some solar lights on the signs, they're going to buy everything. So we're just going to have to install them all. But other than that, they're going to construct a 150-foot turning lane so their trucks can get in and out, a little bit more safer than just the two-lane.
It's provided, they're expensing it.
Yeah, they're paying for everything, the lights, everything, the signs, the asphalt. They're going to make it a six inches deep turning lane. But the reason they're asking, they're putting in our right of way, and when they're done, we'll really pack it out, make it pretty well. But they're bringing in those big windmills, is what they're doing, those trucks. They're trucking them in from there to different destinations throughout Texas. That's why they...
Does that deteriorate, will they replace?
Well, we'll maintain it, if it gets potholes or whatever. It's only a year or two thing they're going on right now. It's only supposed to last a year.
And that's for all the delivery of those...
Yes, they come in through the railroad tracks, and then they ship them out. So that's what they're asking for.
And what about any of the local businesses that surround that location?
There's nothing except for the Harrington Electrical Plant out there. That's the only thing, that's why they want that turn lane, because people tend to go fast down that road, and they want to get kind of out of the way, those trucks moving loads of...
And they, and not talking to the Union Pacific, they're also well aware of what the work schedule is, the electrical plant, so they try and intentionally try and time some of their trucks going in and out so that rush hour out there, so. The agreement, the draft you have, they prepared that, it's a pretty simple agreement. And they prepared it, and we okayed it, I have a, we revised it just slightly, but it just, it just... They, all they changed was down a paragraph, too, and talks about the counties, county will maintain. They changed it to put county at its sole cost, which is, I think, kind of understood anyway. We'll maintain it average bill, which I think was kind of understood anyway, but we put it in just to clarify that. But otherwise, the agreement will have, we will sign as identical to the draft that you have provided. And we need the motion to approve the agreement, we also need to okay the placement, I think, of the traffic signs as well.
Okay, it's been motion to approve, I'll second it, to act upon the Amendment of Understanding we intend to construct a turning lane on the North Side at U.P.'s expense, and the installation of signage on or before 2000, February 2015, in connection with U.P.'s expense. All of those in favor? A pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 13, Regional Court Collection Workshop, and is to receive an invitation to a Northern Courts Collection Improvement Workshop by the State Office of Court Administration on Thursday, December 11, Room 600, Hightower County Courthouse. Laura?
Laura. This year, our regional director has decided to do a workshop in our area. They used to be a little bit further. This year, she's, our side is one of the places. It's just an invitation to come in and ask questions, get some information. She's going to go over a lot of our reporting techniques, and for us, and whoever shows up, different alternative election methods, you know, just different tools that we can use. But it is a good time to come in and ask questions, get any questions as far as reporting, or getting reports or anything like that.
Excellent.
By the way, we posted that, just in case we, how many would be interested in the court? Just as a precaution, we posted that, just as a meeting, just to attend, so you don't have to worry about a court getting present. If that means you want to go.
So I mean again, it's Thursday, December 11, here in Room 600, Hightower County Courthouse. So if you have a turn to do that. So noted. 14, executive sessions, Dave? Item 15 is a jail report. Item fifteen is a jail report, and it's, the numbers are four eighty-one, with eighty-three of that being females, and have a great, great day also, chair, but any, any of those females outside of the area, all, oh.
All.
Item sixteen, any county insurance items, Dave, anything going on there?
I did, I did just receive message that possible three had an accident Friday, but I don't have any other information, so I'll bring that to the next court, next court.
Okay, is it okay?
Yeah, I did, it just said, hey, reported accident.
Any other agenda items to come before the court, just there?
If we would just place, in terms of the agenda items, a placeholder for the Southern Independent receipts or improvements, so we have those on as committed to Mrs. Tucker this morning.
Yes, okay. Just encourage everybody to come out Friday afternoon, two to four, we've got a party coming.
All right, nothing else, court stands adjourned.
I got my ballot.